All right, good morning ladies and gentlemen, sorry for being late, we had a little technical error here. We'll blame the IT guy, since he's sitting across from us. Uh, we'll call the meeting to order here, um, any liquor licenses today? I thought that was all part of it.
Oh, okay, well, I just know, yes, we have two liquor licenses, sorry.
Hey, I will do that, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
You'll be lays on.
Okay, we start over? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda and minutes as presented.
Can I second it on the agenda and the minutes?
We've got a motion and a second to approve the agenda and minutes, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Liquor license?
Okay, we have two, and one is for Lake Ohana Market. Um, it's a, just a minute here. Um, Sunday sales, um, basically it's for the market to sell Sunday sales, and the other one is also for Lake Ohana, but it is for the, just one second, Class B native wine and Sunday sales, and, and the Class C beer permit.
And all the papers and everything is?
Yes.
I'd make a motion to approve the liquor license for Lake Ohana, both of them.
Can I second it?
Got a motion and a second to approve the liquor licenses for Lake Ohana Market, is there any discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion's carried. I don't have any updates to you, Richard?
I had a teleconference with Veterans Affairs, but really nothing's changed there, other than, uh, they're still doing business. Some, some people want to come in the office, as long as they wear a mask, they're fine, but there's lots of mail, and especially there's a lot of phones going back and forth, so, uh, uh, you know, and, uh, there's a gentleman that's on board, on the board, that has several grandchildren that want to help, uh, put flags and stuff up in the cemetery, especially like the Glenwood Cemetery and stuff, so, and they can earn points and things, and we thought it was a good idea, why not let the Boy Scouts take over and do this, or if the girls want to help, we had no problem, you know? Uh, oh, just some things, the community's waiting for it to open up, you know, the farmer's market's coming in, Indian Creek Breakfast, uh, the ten thousand dollar grant that we're supposed to get from the state, they're not sure that it's gonna be ten thousand dollars, it could be ninety-five hundred, it could be eight thousand, where, you know, because of the coronavirus, but we're just gonna wait and see. And we still have, we're still battling with a bill of thirty-one hundred dollars with Century Link, we'll probably end up paying it, it's just that it was, was billed to Glenn something else, was going to Wisconsin, I think that's the state it was going to, and finally it shows up here in this amount, and we go, and why, why, what, what, you know, so they got to investigating, and they were sending the, sending the bill to the wrong place, so there's no service fee or anything on it, but, you know, something we have to do, and then we're gonna check out the spiral solution beings that, I don't think there's gonna be a spiral solution, you know, from the way they talk.
They're being bought out.
They're being bought out, so the person that actually owns the building is who we're gonna have to set up a lease with.
Ironically, I had a copy of the lease, they didn't, they didn't have one, and I said, oh, I have one here, she was like so excited.
I'm glad, did you turn it into the county attorney's supposed to get it?
Well, she didn't tell me that, but she's got it, so I'm sure she'll get it.
And then I had a Board of Health meeting last night that went very well, uh, you know, it's basically all on coronavirus, it's, uh, I don't know how they're keeping ahead of it, but, uh, the things they have to go through and the paperwork, uh, you know, they, they explained how a case works last night, you know, if you, someone calls in and says, well, I think I have coronavirus, how the process is handled, you know, it's, it's a hundred twenty-four seven, but it's how they get the person quarantined or hospitalized, and so far, uh, nine cases, nine, we have thirteen cases, nine cases have been, I guess, called released, they've had their fourteen days of quarantine. Of course, we got a new one yesterday, and that one there is quarantined in-house, so we're very fortunate that we haven't had any, any deaths from it, and that we haven't had to go to the hospital, so, that's all I have.
Well, I've got two, uh, conference, phone conferences today, our MAPPA Finance Board, and we're hoping this is gonna be our last, or thinking about maybe we can do a, uh, regular board meeting next month, and, uh, then I've got a six o'clock conference call from West Central, they had gotten a ten thousand dollar grant, of course, it helps with, uh, the food banks and, and such like, and, uh, things are, are still lined up to help with, uh, heating assistance, lighting assistance, so, West Central's got their hands full. So other than that, we're sure ready to have regular board meetings, that's for sure. That's all I've got.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is to authorize Patrick Benz, IT Director, to purchase an IBM Power Server AS400 Schedule Replacement.
Yeah, we got a couple.
So in supervisor terms, what's that mean?
So this is the server that handles all the real estate, everything, property tax, so auditor, treasurer, recorder, and assessor all run off this server, so, it's a mainframe server.
Kind of important.
Used to be called AS400, now it's called a IBM Power Server, but this is our scheduled replacement, it's a budgeted item. Uh, it's two bids, power and everything, it's thirty-two thousand, two ninety-eight and five cents.
Gonna have that nickel.
Yeah, and it's from Solutions.
That's from Solutions.
That's from Solutions.
Did you have another one or not?
Yeah. Unless you want to change your solutions.
Oh, yeah, no, no, never mind.
I'd make a motion that we allow Patrick Benz to purchase a AS400 Schedule Replacement.
I second it.
We've got a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
So how often do you have to replace these?
Over in five years.
Five years?
Five to seven, or a little past five, but ideally five.
Is this a budgeted item?
Yeah, perfect.
It's out of your budget?
Comes out of the supervisor's budget, out of our, out of our travel, over road travel.
Comes out of your travel expense.
There you go.
We're gonna have big parties, we've all got enough money, we-
That's more than we make.
Yeah.
Well, we're gonna put it all together.
Oh, you're gonna lump it together? All right, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Go buy a server.
The next one I had was for email security, this is an add-on, a piece of hosted software that complements our existing, uh, email security system, specifically geared towards phishing emails, so emails that necessarily don't have a malicious link, that don't have a bad attachment, uh, but they're trying to get people to respond, and those kind of emails are tougher to catch, so this specific software is geared just towards that. We've had it running for about four weeks now, and it's been catching a lot of things that we've been missing otherwise, to keep out of the end user's inbox, so from a cybersecurity perspective, it's a really good piece of software, and it's gonna help us a lot of things, so, um, this one is four thousand two hundred and eighty-four dollars, also a budgeted item.
So-
Do you get that from?
This is, no, this is from Avanon, A-V-A-N-A-N.
Oh, I see that, okay, sorry, I should pay attention to the agenda.
This is a cloud-based software annual subscription, so something we're only ever here.
Will I make a motion for Patrick to purchase his Avanon, Avanon?
Avanon, yep.
Email security system? For four thousand two hundred and eighty-four dollars.
Second?
We've got a motion and a second to authorize Patrick Benz to purchase the Avanon email phishing security add-on. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. You're out here again?
One more.
The third one I'll have to come back for, they didn't get the quote back to me yet, so, that is for a fiber optic network switch that's gonna go in the new engineer's building, so.
Oh, sweet.
Yeah.
Table that's on next week.
Put that on hold.
We'll do that next week, so, I just want to get it spent before the energy.
Good, we're gonna say no.
I think we oughta get the building done first, we got, you know, we got a couple months.
While I got it here.
Yeah, you know, dangle it out in front of him till he thinks he really needs it.
Yeah, I guess.
He's, he's around track, I don't know, it's looking, looking pretty good.
It is, it's looking really good.
Looks like an actual building.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's starting to shape up.
Yeah, it's looking great. Going smooth?
Yeah, it is.
I've had three supervisors from three different counties call and ask for a quote.
For what?
Price of the building, they go, what? I said, well, what do you, what do you expect? I says, if you're gonna build an office and a mechanics room?
There's cranes in there.
Yeah, I said, we have, we have everything in there you can think of.
Yeah.
Considering ours was built in the sixties and you can't even get-
The Potter County Engineer, he, he actually estimated a higher, uh, per square footage price than what we had, so, I thought we were pretty well in line.
Yeah.
They was gonna move JD out of town, but they decided to leave him in town.
It's a hundred year fix.
Oh, yeah, well, look how long we've run the other one, how many years has that been there?
Right.
At least fifty some years, probably sixty.
Yeah, it's older than you, for sure.
It was built in the fifties or early sixties.
She was old when I was there. I think she just called you old.
I heard that.
I just said he might remember it.
That's recorded too.
His, one of his relatives may have told him about it.
Get the county attorney up here.
I looked back and looked at the historical imagery, that's how I could figure out, sometimes nineteen fifty-five and nineteen sixty-two.
That might have been, I might have been, might have, interesting.
Oh, my time.
Okay.
You're on, thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, Patrick.
Patrick took all the money, so I hope you don't want it.
Thanks, Patrick.
I'm not asking for money today, so.
You go for utilities, Cory?
None, this week. It is nice with our new hire, got him started on our utility permits, um, getting some of those cleaned up, that was a role, um, that I expect him to handle, um, have past experience with, uh, inspection and enforcement of permits, uh, I think he's taken to it pretty quickly, and he's getting things kind of organized that weren't so well organized previously, so.
Good.
Also, he's converting all of our documents, um, from, to a fillable PDF, which seems like a great idea, since we're doing a lot of our permitting online.
Right, right.
So, um, my first action item is driveway variance on Two Hundred Second Street, just, uh, two hundred and fifty, fiftieth feet, two hundred and fifty feet north of the Fanch Road intersection, Fanch is a private roadway, um, so we're, we're just west of Pony Creek.
North side, northwest side of Pony Creek.
Pony Creek, here's Two Hundred Second Street.
This is a road up on top of the hill.
Yes, sir.
Probably used to be Turkey, Turkey Ridge or-
It's still Gobbler Ridge, yeah, with, uh, Hoffman and Nakamoto did the development there.
So they're gonna develop that?
They wanna purchase, um, I'll read, I'll read her, uh, the request for hardship, the property I would like to purchase is landlocked, I believe it is this property.
Nope.
No?
No, she's, uh, she bought this piece, and it's not shown on here yet, I don't want to miss your, I don't want to miss your dimensions of Cory, but it's something like this, and this is all canyon.
Mm-hmm.
So she wants to build here.
And since Fanch is a private driveway, private road, um,
Yes.
They have to be granted an easement from the landowner, Mr. Hoffman.
Yes.
And he does not want to, and, and so she's looking for an alternative entrance to a little piece of property. So her request is, I have a property I would like to purchase that is landlocked, I have Fanch Road access, but not, don't quite understand this, but not six feet from North Side Fanch to property.
Yeah, she, she read that to me when she brought it in, and I'm, I wasn't sure what she was saying on it.
I'm not quite sure. In a sense, it's landlocked, yet it's not, right?
It is not landlocked, it is, she would have to put a tube in to get across the canyon.
Uh, the tube, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the tube would, the tube would be the size of this building, correct, it'd be a bridge.
Yeah.
Holy cow, she wants to do that?
The canyon is not too far from the road there, if I remember.
Uh, it is, it is quite, uh, quite the canyon, oh, it's gonna take a while.
I have no problem, I, I have no problem with this, but, you know, we always tried not to landlock anything, but this is not really landlocked, it's just that the person that owns the road, best entrance is off of a private drive.
Right, yes.
She does have a hardship, but she is not landlocked.
Right. Um, I would like to have the county put in a driveway to the old driveway, I'm not sure where the old driveway is, and I, and talking with her, and my driveway foreman talking with her, we still couldn't kind of figure out what old driveway, but it was built in nineteen seventy-one off Fanch Road, apparently, two hundred feet to the east.
Off of the Fanch Road, okay.
Yeah, she did say there was a, a entrance that is there, but it's not marked, or something they were using as an entrance, I do recall her saying that.
Off of Fanch.
Is it off of Fanch, okay.
So she would basically want to connect it, and probably go to the south, and find wherever that driveway is, right around where you're at. It was denied, uh, separation with Fanch Road and site distance as well, she only had, she had five hundred and eighty feet site distance, um, to the north and three hundred and twenty feet to the south, it requires six hundred and ten feet.
What it amounts to is, the guy that owns Fanch Road,
Yeah.
is it doesn't want to allow anyone to-
He won't allow her to enter off of here, she actually bought this lot, this lot or this lot, because the homeowners association can use this road, the homeowners in this subdivision, and she's working on getting an easement from Tom Kennedy here, because Tom owns this, but I don't know if that will work or not, but in the meantime, we created a parcel here, we let her create a parcel, she bought it, she has a area here that was used at one time for an entrance, but it's not really declared a legal official entrance, and her only other access is off of here, which he won't allow. So she, her, her north property line is like right in here, she wants to go as far north as she can, but she can't get any farther because she's on, you know, still this owner. So she's, in a way, she's landlocked, but she's not, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I understand.
It's, 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 it's as clear as mud, but she's frustrated.
Can't do a bridge or?
She can't.
Can't do it.
No, what she'll do, Carol, she'll, she won't come across it.
She'll wind.
She'll come down here.
And, yeah, it'll-
Get to it.
It's gonna be a heck of a driveway.
Yeah, yeah. She, she would be entering on her the whole time, she would have a long driveway.
Yeah, she would. Wow.
So she's got a piece, she has access, but she can't use that access off of Fanch, and she wants to put one in as far north as she can possibly get it.
So when that's a private drive, the guy has the authority to yea or nay?
It's in the contract. Yeah, when they did the subdivision, he, he, he is still the owner of the road from here to here.
Okay.
Because if you look at this, this is-
The rest of the easement, or the rest of Fanch Road is, is, uh, under the homeowners association, I believe.
That's why she was trying to work it in this way, but, but I don't know if she got it done, obviously not, because she's in here, but, yeah. She was flooded, she just wants to build. She can't get access to it.
Sure. So the variance is because it doesn't meet site or?
Or separation.
Separation.
Okay.
You're talking about this one that doesn't meet site, or the one that she could have, or that one doesn't have site distance or separation?
Yeah, the one on the private road, we wouldn't have to worry about, because it's a private road.
Yeah.
Right.
It wouldn't even come in front of us. She just can't get to it now, unless she walks. But she bought it to build, and then can't.
Well, she lived there during the flood.
Here, in a trailer?
Oh.
And she had a couple buddies living down in here.
She had two parcels, she had one on, or down on Lambert too.
Yeah, she lived out of her car for a while. She wants a home, bought it thinking she could build. The access wasn't there.
Well, did she not think that might be a little problem before she bought it? Get to it, maybe? Well, she was able to get, wasn't she able to, to get to her current resident, wasn't there like an old farmhouse there or something, and she was able to get to that, but then that flooded out?
Once, well, oh, down south, I don't know what happened.
Two Hundred Second?
Um, yeah, I don't know, out here? Yeah, this is Two Hundred Second here, I don't think she owns anything else, Carol. This-
There was an old farmhouse back in there. And who owns that ground there, Cory? Where she lived.
Where, this piece here?
Oh, I can't remember.
Esther Brook. Yeah. In the county, the county approved this split for her to do this, assuming she had access, and then she didn't. Once she started getting the builder up there, Hoffman says, no, you can't use that. So he stopped her. That is the mailbox.
Oh, that's the mailbox?
Yep, that's, that's, that's the mailbox cluster. I don't know that one, this is-
I thought there was a house there.
This is her.
Oh, okay.
There's nothing there, she just pulled her camper on it.
Well.
So all the county would have to do is just put a tube in, and it's up to her to-
She would, she would.
She would pay for the tube, she wants us to construct it, yeah.
Yeah, it's a driveway, it's not gonna cost us a nickel.
We would put it to the edge of the right of way.
And checks.
Well, does she realize how, how long and how expensive that's gonna be? Good luck in the wintertime, right?
It wouldn't be a bad drive, it's just long. Sixty, it'll be, it'll be probably five hundred feet long, four, four, four fifty anyway, nothing like the guy down at your place.
That's just short.
Those miles through your field. For the guy for the dam.
It just seems like an awful long ways. As long as the site distance is good, nobody's gonna-
It's not, it's a variance.
It's not.
Nothing is good. Yeah, I mean, she isn't, she isn't on the corner.
No, she would, she would prefer to be closer to the corner, I think, but, uh, you want to keep them as far away from each other as possible, yeah.
And it's two hundred and fifty feet, so it does not have separation either.
Right.
It's not a good location for a driveway. But there's no better spots on Two Hundred Second Street.
Well, I was gonna say, you can't, there's nothing else for her to choose from.
I'd be scared too if we denied it, because we approved the split, and we usually approve them if they have to have access first.
Is that pretty hilly, or is it, it's pretty hilly?
Yeah, it's on the top of the hill.
Do you have any great suggestions?
Perfect, well, the owner of Fanch would just grant an easement to her, let her use it, but-
And I see that happening eventually.
Do you?
Just the way it changes.
Okay, we gotta get off to the dead center here. I'll make the motion to approve the variance at Two Hundred Second Street, north of Fanch Road. It's not that I like the idea of private roads in Mills County, but, uh, I guess we do have a few of them.
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
We've got a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Signature underneath the X, BOS signature.
Gotta be glad we're not putting in wind towers. I went through Page County yesterday, and off of Highway Two, the Dozer just backs up in the field as far as he has to, they'll get enough dirt to put in a sixty-foot driveway. And then they bring in three-inch rock and pile it, about this deep. Then they go out in the field, and they start, they just start leveling off, packing, leveling off, packing, and I went by seven, seven sites yesterday.
They're disruptive.
Oh. It was, I met eight, eight blades going down the road in line. I mean, they all had their escorts and stuff, but the tubes and stuff, geez.
Uh, just south of Silver City, um, yeah. We are just south of Silver City, the, uh, next driveway variance I have is on Two Hundred Eighty-Fifth Street, north of Two Hundred Eighty- seventh Street, so we're just south of Silver City, there's a cemetery, and this is for, um, Cloud One Services, they're putting in a a tower, um,
Did you say Cloud One?
Cloud One, yep, they're out of Wisconsin, but they're putting in a tower, some sort of communications tower. Um, they're putting one here and one near Henderson, actually.
So it can help Silver City have internet?
I didn't really ask, I, I, I assume so.
It's south of City Limits?
Yes.
This is a cemetery.
It's about a hundred and fifty feet north of this build entrance.
How big of a tower, Cory?
It is, uh, a one hundred by one hundred foot area, um, the actual tower looks to be more like fifty feet by fifty feet, um, not, no height on it. Um, they do not have separation. And-
So are they planning to put it right by those grain bins?
Yes.
Those two, so it's on that, who's that guy's place?
Uh, Hunt used to own that, I don't know whether he still does or not.
Yep.
Yep.
Really?
Their request says, property owner wanted a separate, wanted a separate, same driveway, as he wanted no interference with his ability to access the grain bins on the property. The access proposed will see very little traffic after construction, this will only be used to access for quarterly maintenance and any outage issues.
It's in town.
Separate access is a security measure as well.
If that's gonna help them any.
Anything to help them?
Yeah.
Yeah, we do.
There's the town, City Limits. Um, it's just separation, uh, side distance was fine.
We have that marked, is that, is that still a fifty-five mile an hour road?
Ooh, good question, um, I'm not sure.
I think that's twenty five.
You wouldn't think it'd be fifty five.
I don't, no, I don't think it's fifty five, but.
No, because it drops over the hill to residential right away, so.
Yeah, you're just outside the city limits.
I know it's definitely twenty five or something down here, but I can't remember when, or if it bumps up.
Yeah, I just wondered what we posted it. Okay, separation?
Just separation.
Alright, just separation, I make a motion for the separation. Variance on two eighty fifth street.
Second.
Good a motion and a second to approve the driveway variance on two hundred and eighty fifth, just north of two hundred and eighty seventh, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Aye.
Motion carries. Seems like I have some whiteout that's been rubbed across my agenda.
I didn't, um, Jackie, I have it too, I think we all did, apparently she must have had a roll call. I see, that was real hard. Yeah.
Was it roll call?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, there's like a few.
You know, when you cut and page that happens.
And Ringo County has the same problem we have. They've, they've been told by different, uh, companies that they have dirty wind.
The thing of what?
What they call dirty wind.
Well, they said.
Because of all, I mean, you get down there, I mean, it just goes like this. Up and down, and then you got the nod away flat part, but, uh. People I talked to yesterday said in the other, uh, companies won't even come in and talk to them because of the dirty wind, they can't, you cannot sustain. A thirty five mile wind at a certain height, that's a problem around here at the West Hills. It comes in here and drops down and it doesn't blow across.
Interesting, I didn't know.
Yeah, we had a, we had a study done back when Ron and Joe was on the, because Joe thought we ought to be looking at wind turbines. Which wasn't a bad idea, but. Now that, when you see, they're having a big problem in Page County, just over, uh. Property rights. Some people say, I got the right to build, yes, you have the right to build, but it cannot fall on someone else. So you, I don't know, what are they, three hundred foot tall? Something like that. You know, so you have to have a distance, the tower is three hundred foot, you have the blade that sticks out so far, you have to be that far. It cannot touch someone else's property if it falls. And people don't want that. They want the right to do whatever they want, well, you can't infringe on your neighbor, you know?
Oh, Richard, I could see how this could be.
Chuck Morris says he think I'm, I think I'm gonna lose my seat over it. So. Yeah, they're, you know. It's not as easy as everybody thinks.
You're right.
I mean, I don't know that we have anything on, in our ordinance as far as covering wind.
But doesn't often, I mean, haven't they clamped down on us ever getting wind turbines?
They, they never said anything in the study we had.
Yeah, a lot of times they complain about it, it'd be west.
As long as you have lights, as long as you have lights on them, you know?
Okay, when I was on the advisory board, they had said, well, Glendale will never have wind turbines, and I didn't realize that.
Okay, we did a motion to.
Yes, set the public hearing date for amendment to floodplain regulations ordinance on June fourth at nine AM.
I will make that motion.
Okay, and I second it.
We've got a motion and a second to set the public hearing date for the amendment to the floodplain regulations ordinance, what, what exactly is that amendment?
So we just did the new ordinance for the floodplain to stay, uh, current with the FEMA's, um, regulations. Well, when we turned it in, it was to Iowa D N R for, uh, their concurrence on it to make sure that everything looked good. As FEMA set out, uh, provided for them. FEMA then said, well, you actually need to change this one sentence to, to state this, so we are changing one sentence. On our recently passed floodplain ordinance.
And I'm hoping that we can just do that little part and instead of having to redo the whole dang ordinance, because that costs us a bunch to publish that.
It was about six pages long in the newspaper, the whole world.
Paper made good money on us, but I think we can, I've got a visible Tyler, but I'm pretty sure we can just do that little point.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Alright, aye.
Which also means, just because of that date, um, you guys are going to meet on June fourth because we have the election on June second. So Thursday, June fourth, this week rescheduled, you're meeting and you're still here. I don't know about anybody else, but you're still here.
Yep.
You're not, you're not going during election time?
Not this year.
Nope, we pushed it off so Cole could graduate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We wanted to attend graduation and. After we pushed it off, they canceled it. So we're going a week later. We're still going though.
We're going.
Good.
Minnesota, thirteenth year. It is. Way north.
Be nice, before mosquitoes get out.
That's exactly right.
And my brother spent two years on the Boundary Waters, uh, in college.
Yeah.
He, he got his Duke, master's degree in predatory mammals, so he's actually tagging wolves and stuff up there.
Neat.
Didn't he work for the Conservation Corps or anything up there?
I can't remember who he worked for, but.
Because my daughter worked there.
I remember just hearing about the.
Conservation Corps.
About, hearing about the mosquitoes and everything there in the middle of summer, unbearable.
It is, yeah, I don't feel like this big.
Yeah. I have a question in, in general discussion here.
Yes.
We have a complaint filed with, to the D N R on a hog confinement.
An air complaint or?
We don't know, all it, we just got a notice at Public Health. From D N R that someone has complained and they have to come down and take care of it, but they wanna know who the person is down here. That they take care of. And I don't know whether it was engineer. Health Department or the county board.
Well, okay, what's the, we don't know what the complaint is, we just know it's on a hog complaint, confinement.
Yep.
We never had.
It'll be on the matrix.
The only time I've ever received a, a complaint from D N R was air quality because of dusty roads.
Well, the only thing that this could be here would be smell.
That'd be air, right? They consider dirty air.
Well, yeah, but, you know, and I, I haven't had a chance to look at the matrix, and I thought maybe somebody remembered. Or his manure plan if, if they're, because we only got two of them and they're both owned by Hock.
Well, there's another one that goes through the county too, but what about?
Yeah, but all he does is spread manure up in the northeast part.
Probably the complaints are probably spreading right now for the plant.
And, and there wouldn't be any spreading of manure right now anyway.
No.
I thought they did it twice a year, spring and fall.
No, well, if they do it early spring, yes, it'd be done because it's all planted.
Right.
I, that might be a county attorney question.
Well, I, I asked him and he says, I'm gonna have to look that up.
Good, let him look that up, and then he can get back to us.
Uh, we've never had one before.
No. And air quality, I don't know how, who.
And the only reason I got the air quality is because it's because of a road, and so.
Well, I could see the dust, but this would be just basically smell out of the unit.
Yeah, I wonder if that.
Okay, maybe, here's my question, this is D N R. Maybe D N R's the one that does it, aren't they the one that determines whether there's?
No, they wanna know who the contact person is in Mills County.
It'd either be Corey or me.
Well, that's what I, you know, or, or would it be the Public Health, I mean, Public Health, it's a health problem.
Well, if the complaint is a health issue, I mean, it could be a dead, yeah, yeah, I don't know.
It could be zoning, probably too, I don't know.
Isn't that Master Matrix is to find though?
Well, I thought that's where a fella can find it, maybe.
Well.
Maybe, maybe Tyler will find out.
Tell them to call Page County.
Yeah.
And see if they complain down there, I mean, if they really wanna find us, they'll find us.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, I got a meeting with, uh, Army Corps, uh, coming up this week to go over road damages on a hundred and ninety fifth street. They're the ones, uh, taking material out of the Kid Creek drainage, uh, ditch. And seen, seen some shoulder damage, seal coat breakup right there by, uh, Kid Creek on a hundred and ninety fifth street. They've also had complaints from the public about their trucks, uh. Cueing or idling on the roadway, waiting to, to get loaded and, and they did, they were responsive and, and put some flaggers out. Um, just to, for safety aspects. But we'll, we'll go down and kinda go over what, what they, they need to repair. Army Corps always, we, we met with them at a couple locations. Where they were, so what was they would be hauling, and we took some before pic, pictures and video, but they didn't bring up this location, so. Um, they, they always tell us, yeah, if we damage it, we'll repair it. Well, we had the issue on Kane Avenue where they damaged it when they were putting in the, um, berm around the water treat, or around the water facility. And then they refused to, uh, fix the damages, luckily I was able to get that passed through, uh, E R project, but. But we're, uh, we're gonna meet Thursday and see how it goes. It's tough on seal coat roads. Because to really fix it, sometimes you have to grind it all up and reseal it like we're currently doing. And so, we'll, we'll, we'll kinda see how that goes, if I can definitely get the shoulders repaired. And maybe some pa- patching. But we need a, I, I got Kyle and Richard coming down, we'll, we'll evaluate the road together with them. Uh, speaking of seal coat, uh, seal coat contractor is in the county, they were, started yesterday and working. In hand with, uh, our county forces, they're, they're at M sixteen right now, they're starting on the north end. Getting three, four miles of seal coat placed a day, and they'll work their way east to west. I, I believe it's gonna be M sixteen and then down to L sixty, uh, three or L sixty eight. And then keep moving west. We get twenty six miles of seal coat going on, and so that's, uh, exciting, I'm sure people living on those routes will be happy to have their, uh, hard surface road back.
Well, I wouldn't advise anyone to travel L sixty eight. Our part's fine. But when you cross into Fremont County. Hmm. Oh. When you can go airborne, it, it doesn't make any difference which side of the road you're on.
How fast are you driving?
Fifty-five? Maybe.
But no matter what, one tire always hits.
Oh, you can't miss them, you cannot miss the canyon.
Yeah, they really.
You know, I'm trying to figure out how they put their humps in the road. I, I'm serious, I mean.
I think it was from jumping, jiggling, and it fell out of the truck because there's mounds.
Well, we'll, we'll keep track of, uh, the work on these flood affected routes and I'll turn those right into, uh. Our homeland right away for the flood, flood recovery fund. Uh, we have a deck four tomorrow on a hundred and ninety street.
First one, last one, mid, midway?
First and only deck four.
First and only, they're gonna get it.
They'll, they'll get the whole deck poured, uh, tomorrow.
They're gonna start in the middle and work their way out, or how are they gonna do that?
Uh, they'll have two pump trucks, actually, one on the north end, one on the south end, they'll start on the north end. Get probably two thirds of the way, um, before they switch and haul concrete trucks to the south end. Um, they wanna get as much done on the north end just because it's an easier, um.
In and out.
Concrete truck route for, for, uh, those guys, those drivers and. And, uh, we had our pre, pre-form meeting last Thursday with the providers, or with the supplier and the contractor and. B N S F and B N S F's, uh, um. Contract administration also, and so everybody's on the same page, uh, D O T's even gonna come down for, for it, uh. Probably do some material testing as well. So that's, that's very exciting, um.
When's it gonna happen again?
When? Tomorrow, uh, first truck expected at five thirty in the morning, and it should be done probably a little bit afternoon. One o'clock, two o'clock, maybe. If things go to plan.
Sure.
There's always a hiccup or something, but hopefully goes smooth. Um, but yeah, if you wanna go out, let me know, um.
Okay.
We'll have, J U is doing the contract administration for the bridge, but we'll still have, um. Uh, probably both of our technicians out there just, uh, observe, see, see the process. It's about as exciting as, uh.
Long time coming.
As we get, and so it, it is pretty, it is pretty cool, um, actually.
Yeah, get that on our slip form and it'll get done. Good.
Um, the only other thing I had, uh, is repairs are, the final repairs are being done on two hundred and twenty first street. Uh, those were the culvert extensions that were associated with our overlay project last year. Once those are all complete, shouldn't be seeing any more, um, lane closures or, or, uh, traffic, uh. Or work construction areas for the traffic, so, uh, it'll be, be nice to put that one to bed and, and get that off the desk. That's, that's kinda what's going around in our office.
Good deal. Well, thank you, sir.
Problem.
Yeah, I have a favor, um, we seem to have a M O U S E problem in the basement, um, pretty bad down there.
You're there.
His basement, um.
Really?
Oh, yeah, we've got mouse stuff everywhere in all of our election stuff.
Hmm.
And, um, yeah, it's kinda nasty, ugly, is there any way you guys could throw some bait or, or?
I put some traps out in our lab the other day. There were none, uh, caught when I last checked.
Maybe they don't like what you put on their traps, I don't know.
Peanut butter.
Well, and the whole thing is that door. Now he's gonna say. If we can get that door fixed. There's a little gap in the doorway. Little Scotch tape out there.
You don't have to wrap it, I think, just put the Scotch tape on top of it. Don't really gotta dig at it.
I put glue in, in the hole.
And still nothing.
So, no, we can spread some more out.
Don't get two legs caught on a trap. A sticky trap. They can pull that under any couch, chair, TV stand.
That's why I wouldn't use the poison, because they'll go crawl somewhere.
Oh, that's true.
Right on the open.
Well, whatever, if we can catch them, also, I don't know, would you look at the door to see what your thoughts are on what needs to be done to fix it? So we could maybe get that fixed, because that's where the, where our problem lies, I know you're moving out soon, but we just need to.
Get a Mark user, a Bloom or a buyer or somebody in there and.
Yeah.
Take a look at it.
Thank you, I appreciate it, it's kinda yucky when the, the election workers open their printers and. Fun things fly out. It's like, oh, things, things, oh, yeah, so, appreciate it, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Corey.
Enjoy your day. Five thirty in the morning, you gonna be out there early?
Uh, I'll probably go out there about six thirty or so. Since, since we have J U doing the, the testing and everything, so. I need to be there right away. Plus, uh, usually it's, uh, test the first truck, wait and hear the results, and then batch the next one, so there's, there's usually a decent gap between the first and the second truck, so.
This got me, it's pouring the towers or the pads for the wind towers down there, if they don't have eleven loads of concrete setting. You start pour, they don't, the eleventh load has to be there.
They must be testing it right out of the plant.
Wow.
Yeah, I, I believe that.
I'm, I'm going eleven loads, what kind of a pad are you pouring, you know, I mean, this thing's gotta be how deep?
Yeah, that's a hundred and ten yards probably, or a hundred yards. It's a lot.
It's a lot of concrete.
We have four hundred yards on the deck for us.
Okay, we'll be there in the morning.
We got Jill Ford, yeah.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great. Yeah, go get Jill and then we'll go. Her tax sale is also the same person that, um, owns the variance. And another location.
We're at. Where at?
Doesn't, doesn't.
Was it? I thought it was C. Kathy what?
You're back already? Oh, oh, you wore a coat. Okay. Good, good boy. Your mother would be proud. Let me put a note to her. Thank you, ma'am.
Um, I got a call from, uh, a lady who is interested in buying a half lot in PJ that is on Mills County tax sale. She tells me she is next door neighbors, 'cause I asked her again. She said she is now a next door neighbor to her. And so, um, what she would like to do is, she's restoring her home. And she would like this lot Andy Young told her it's too small to build a house on. In PJ, two oh three Mills is the one she wants to buy. No, excuse me, two oh five Mills is the one she wants to buy. Two oh three Mills. Is the one that is in tax sale. She said it, she said it's gonna cost her about four thousand dollars to tear the house down and get it hauled away. So she wants to know what we, what we can do. Do for, the tax sale is, it's pretty, the tax sale is like, uh. Over four thousand and then the back taxes are like over nine thousand. But then yesterday she called again and she said she'd like to buy that property on a sheriff's sale for a hundred dollars. Well, it's not on a sheriff's sale because there's no mortgage due on it or no mortgage company, so I need to get back to her on that as well. I, I got this yesterday, so, so what she's wondering is if that's something we would consider. At one point she did, uh, say to me that she was willing to pay maybe a thousand or two for the, the back taxes. And if we would just pay off the Mills County tax sale, just the tax sale itself would be like, uh, fourteen hundred and fifteen dollars. Fifteen, one, four, one, five. And I said, I, since she isn't able to come, I said I would come on her behalf and just. With no resolution or anything, just see what you're, what you're, yes, exactly, what you're thinking.
So what, what was that again, Jill? I'm sorry, I got lost in the numbers when you.
If everything was paid in full, it's the tax sales four thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars, the back taxes are nine thousand one hundred and nine dollars. So we're looking at over thirteen thousand.
Nine thousand in back taxes?
Mm-hmm. Ninety-one oh nine. If you want the exact amount.
We'll never get that back.
So I mean, it's, it was just something that I, I thought we could.
So she lives on the right side.
She's telling me she is at two oh three Mills. She wants to not.
She doesn't own either one of these.
Well, that's what happened when I went to Beacon, but she tells me she owns two, two oh three Mills.
Two oh three is the one that the sale's on, right?
Yeah. Yes, that's, and she is at two oh five.
No, that's on, that's on the, um. Well, isn't that, okay, is that the house that's in the buyout? The next one over?
This one?
No, the next one over. Isn't it in the, was that Wanda? Maybe that wasn't Wanda's house. Oh, okay. Okay, I know where I'm at now. Okay. I was thinking of the other place.
But she, her, I, her thought is she wants to, if you look at the email, beautify and help restore the appearance of the town of, of PJ. She would hire the demolition crew and come in and tear it down and clean it up. And she said that's gonna cost her over four thousand dollars.
Probably.
And she also told me she had talked to the Fritz's daughter and she has no interest at all in the property. I mean, she's still gonna have to get a lawyer and go through the legal. Legal part of it.
Be transferred, but we'd have to take the lien off if we do it. I'm sure we have, it, it's in tax sale?
Mm-hmm. Mills County tax sale. Has been for, uh, since like two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm. That's why there's so many back taxes. Back taxes on it.
Are paying us.
No, they are both deceased. The daughter's not doing anything with it.
Do we have to put it up for bid or anything?
No, we can do it just like we did the one the other day with, with that guy. We can, uh, he gets assigned the tax sale. He pays whatever we decide to pay. Then he has, he has to give the investors ninety days no, or the people that own the property ninety days notice. He has to say, send out something to every person that has an interest in that property. We, uh, we ask them to get legal counsel because they have to either like put it in the paper so people know. In case you have an interest in that property or they, they owed you money or, or something else. Then once their ninety days are up, then they can take deed to the property.
So what's she wanting to pay us? Fourteen, fifteen?
Well, that's what she originally said, but then yesterday in the email, she wanted it for a hundred dollars on a sheriff's sale. But the original tax sale was for the fourteen, fifteen, for one thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars.
And how does she come up with four, fourteen, fifteen? That was just the original?
That's the origi, that's the original tax sale that I had. And she said to me that first time she called. That she didn't have a lot of money, but she, she could do maybe a thousand or two. But then the new email, the new email I got said she wants it on a sheriff's sale for a hundred dollars.
Hey, it's, we'd go, I can't go on a sheriff's sale like you said because there's no.
Right, exactly, exactly.
Okay. Well, what do you think, guys?
I just kind of wanted to feel you out to see if this was something you were even interested in or if you were.
Do you want an action item on this, Jill, or are you just asking us?
No, I'm just asking you to re, yeah, to review it. 'Cause then I'll have to do a, if we're gonna bait taxes, I'll need to do a resolution and, and those kind of things. So I just wanted to feel you out and see what you, what you thought.
Well, right now they owe us nine grand and next year it'll be ten, eleven grand. And the year after it'll be taller, thirteen grand and. Sooner or later, we're gonna have to forgive something.
We're gonna forgive it now or then. Oh, right, I mean.
Do you want to put it back on the tax rolls or not?
Yeah, I mean, you, we're not gonna get rich off of it, but at least we'll be getting the money out of it.
Yeah, we're either gonna not get any money or get some money.
Well, and like she said, she will pay for the demolition part of it, which gets that.
If she puts a structure on it, then it's, it'll help PJ end us.
'Cause she can't put anything on it. She can't put, uh, another house or, uh, now maybe a shed. I guess I didn't, I didn't ask her that.
Why couldn't she put a house on it?
'Cause Andy said the lot's not big enough to put a house on it.
Could you put a trailer on it? I'm, I'm just ha, no, it is a big enough for a trailer.
We don't have anything to do with the city of.
No, 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 no. I'm just wondering if it is.
Well, his mom is trying to buy it. Wanted to win. Used to be Wanda Young.
Yeah, she's dead. She's dead.
How is, how is she owning it then?
She's, it's, it's her estate.
No, it's Mar, Fritz's house.
Right, but the lady.
She has.
Life estate owns it.
I think, oh, maybe she isn't. Maybe she's still in the nursing home. Maybe she is. I thought she passed. I can't either. I thought.
I don't either.
Yeah, not sure. Sorry. Don't know.
I'm sure I'll get to ask my cousin. I don't see anything wrong with it. I think we ought to go ahead and, and get our hundred bu, or fourteen hundred dollars and.
And every, every six months, we're gonna get something too, even if it's just their, if it's.
It goes back to just a lot, yeah.
Either that or every six months we're not getting anything and you have more paperwork to do on something that we're using to calculate funds coming in that we're not getting.
That we're not ever gonna. And if she's willing to clean it up and the whole bid, still would be an added.
Right. Okay, well, I will visit with her.
I'll make a motion to.
No, this is just for a discussion. Yes, this is just a discussion to move forward to see if it.
This is discussing formal action.
It does. You don't really act on anything.
Okay, pass.
No action taken.
Withdraw.
What are you doing?
Well, I was gonna make a motion to go ahead with it, but they say they don't want any action.
Oh, to review and, yeah. Just to review it and to, so she could present a resolution next week.
Move forward.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to throw it out there to you guys to see what you, what you thought or if it was even something that maybe we would.
On the tax rolls.
And, uh, do you have just a minute? I did get the, the Plexiglas up in the driver's license station.
Oh, good.
So it is, it is up. Now, what, are we still planning on using what Carol has for the rest of the office or are we supposed to?
I have, I mean, I have for the election stuff. The only day it has to be used by me is election day. On any election and, but I, and I think they tried it in front of your counters that were, I have like eleven of them. So I have enough for me and, and Jill and, um, Luanne, but Luanne was looking at something different, which is fine. I mean, I told him, it's part of the.
Do you think, do you think this is gonna be something permanent? I mean, public, do you, I mean.
I wouldn't worry about a permanent fix right now, but you, we need something where we all open at the same time. And then afterwards, we can adjust and plan. I mean, I've seen them change. Amaco had their standing up and then ended up hanging them. I mean, people.
That's, that's what we were discussing. It's about the hang.
Works best for most offices.
Because it's like the ones that Carol has, we are going to be taking them, pulling them back every night because they have the long feet on them and we can't close the curtain. So you're, it's gonna be handling them and I just don't want anything, I just don't want anything to happen to them because they're for your.
Yeah, and that's what I said to them. If they have some, a better option that they found to.
Order one, go up, yeah, get them ordered and figure it out.
And where did, did you see somebody had some hanging the other day? Okay, was that hanging by chains or was it?
They just, they just put little eyelets in up here and then they use an S hook and they use this.
It was jimmy rigged.
Was, I mean, is the chain like this long or is it this long or?
Some of them, well, it depends. They, they hung it in two places with the same chain. That way it can't fall forwards, can't fall back and it's supported.
Okay. It'd be a lot cheaper than twenty-four hundred dollars.
Uh, Gary ended up making ones in driver's license and instead of three hundred, we got it down to just a little over a hundred, so.
Oh, I haven't turned.
Can you what?
Is it hanging?
In the driver's license, it can be hanging down a long ways.
Yeah, they should probably ask, yeah.
So if we would go ahead and get the supplies, we could ha, ask them to, to help put them up?
We can ask them.
Okay, okay. And do you have any kind of restrict, well, you know, I'm tight, so we'll be fine.
Do it as cheap and easy as you can, but make sure it's right, make sure it works.
Okay. Yeah, that's just.
One, our whole window, I'm just thinking, trying to go a little, maybe a little smaller.
That's what we were thinking, like.
Yeah, you don't need the whole.
This, this computer here, then have that space that nobody's gonna be in, that computer and on, on the rest of the way down, so.
Over there, I'll keep moving in there too.
Because we have to think too, you're gonna have, um, a line.
Yes.
And, uh, they're always on our game.
Yeah, they're user counter for stuff when they're waiting for me. And are, are we still thinking about the appointment only? Is, is that agreeable with, with, that's about what most people are, are doing is the appointment only.
If everybody I talked to yesterday is going to, they're gonna go to appointment only.
Thank you.
I mean, the people could stand in the outer corridor, you know, and wait to come in.
You mean when we open?
Yes, yes.
But I did hear a lot of them like that online, taking the driver's license. They do like that, so.
And that, the response to the registration online has been, boy, I didn't know it was that easy. I'd have done this before. So it has.
Been good.
Yes, that has been very good.
Right.
Uh, the drop box has been very good. That's, we've gotten, we're getting a lot in, in through the drop boxes as well, so. So we're getting there, but, uh, the state is requiring you to wear a mask, like when you go into the driver's license station there. And they also make you take your temperature before you come in and also ask, they ask questions like.
Do questions like.
Yeah, so I didn't know if we were gonna try to do something similar to that or maybe just a mask and forget the rest of it or. Except, just a lot of things to think about right now. And, uh, some of the drivers, state driver's license station, they have, uh, chosen June first as their, their opening. They've got pilots like in Council Plus and some of the other places, but the other ones have not opened up yet until June first, so. Okay? All right, thank you. Yep, we'll just do our own thing and if you guys will check with. Michael and Steve, that would.
I tried.
Turn in the bill.
I tried.
I know, I know.
But he won't even, he wouldn't even reconsider anything different.
So I don't need a, a treasures. I just turn the bill in to, to you for everything that we have out of pocket. Okay, thank you.
Just, just write up a bill.
Just make it up.
There are three seats. Good. That, that's helpful.
I've got receipts.
Um, where's the, um, Kim? Kim there? Okay.
Morning. All right, what do we got? The sheriff's on vacation this week, so he asked me to come up here and ask permission to carry over the car and the outfit. Into the next budget year because when you guys approved it, we ordered it. And then the COVID thing hit, so they shut all the factories down. Um, they just start, they just started back up yesterday. But there's no guarantee we're gonna have a, a June thirtieth delivery date.
Thirty-eight, sixty-four and sixteen oh eighty-three.
Yeah, it's already, the car's already approved for thirty thousand eight hundred and sixty-four. And the outfit was sixteen thousand eighty-three dollars and sixty-five cents.
Thirteen thousand, what?
Thir, no, sixteen thousand eighty-three, sixty-five, okay, okay, and thirty thousand eight sixty-four.
So you wanna carry over forty-nine, nine forty-seven, fifty grand?
Well, it definitely has put a lot of stuff on hold, hasn't it?
It has, it has. So, um, I know last week we were calling Red Oak Chrysler and they had tried to call the manufacturing and. They tried to get a delivery date too. It just depends on where we're in line on the order, so. Will I make a motion to, uh, roll over the automotive purchase for the next fiscal year?
You wanna set a limit on that? It's forty-nine, nine forty-seven. You wanna make it fifty or do you wanna just stick with the forty-nine, nine forty-seven or?
That's up to you guys, whatever makes it easy.
Potato, potato thing.
Well, that's been the motion.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. But I will say this, do we have a car in for next year too?
We do.
Okay, is that about the same amount?
I, I think he budgeted Carol for a Charger, which now we know those are not available, so I'm gonna say. It, it'll either be a Tahoe or this Dodge Durango. This is what, what was approved this, by you guys before. So it'll be the Durango, which is this price, probably with, it went up this last year, a couple thousand dollars, I'm gonna guess.
Well, and, and this is only, all I'm gonna say is, that can carry over, but we still have to do a budget amendment.
Without a doubt.
To bring it in to the, the line item. And I just wondered, because do you have any idea when you're looking at purchasing the next one then?
Um, usually he, he usually tries to order August or September so that it comes after the September taxes. And orders about that time. It usually takes us a couple months to get it.
Okay, I just wanted to kind of get that timeline in there. If we have one to cover to begin with.
We don't wanna budget amend on July third. Okay.
Right.
What amount you wanna put in there, ma'am?
Let's do the forty-nine.
Forty-nine even?
Forty-nine what?
Forty-nine, nine forty-seven.
Forty-nine.
Thirty-eight, sixty-four and sixteen oh eighty-three. Forty-six.
I was gonna say, I don't think that's right. I get forty-six, I, I get forty-six, nine forty-seven and sixty-five cents.
Okay.
Uh, how about nine forty-eight, just to leave the sixty-five cents off? Did you say nine, it comes up to nine?
Forty-six thousand nine hundred forty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents.
Forty-six.
Nine forty-seven and sixty-five cents.
Let's go to nine, nine forty-eight, okay? I like to do round numbers.
Do you like to clarify your motion a second?
Yes, so I'll make a motion to roll over the purchase for the next year. Four-six. Four-seven.
Forty-six.
Forty-six.
Nine forty-eight.
Nine.
This is a tough one to get through.
Okay, nine forty-eight, even, period.
Second.
You got the gusts a second there?
I don't know.
All right, we've got a motion in a second to allow the sheriff to roll over forty-six, nine forty-eight. Is there any other discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Tell him he said no. He's on vacation, messing with a little bit.
And he'll probably be back next week to hire a new jailer. I sent you all the email that.
And that was approved though.
He got hired by Shenandoah PD, so I got another one testing today and probably be back next Tuesday.
That was fast, wasn't it?
It was.
You can't blame him.
I know. All right.
Thanks, Kim. How are you guys?
We're good.
Come on up.
Is it us or?
Sure.
Yeah, we can, we, we can.
Okay, we can do our thing later.
Okay.
Well, you, you come back.
Oh.
I hate coming to ask favors, but I think it's time. Okay.
Favors are fine, money's not.
I am here asking for a part-time victim witness coordinator position. We did have a full-time victim witness coordinator four years ago. I decided to divvy up those duties between my staff. So that we wouldn't have to hire a full-time position, saving the county about three hundred thousand dollars. But now, um, for the same time period as when we had a full-time victim witness coordinator, we have about thirty extra, additional cases. We, the rights guaranteed to victims are in the code and we can't circumvent those. We have to make sure that they're getting notices, that they're getting restitution, that they're, um, registering with the parole board, getting prepped for depositions. All of those things that come along with being a victim in a criminal case. We think that it's time for a specially trained individual on a part-time basis to come in and fill that position. There's been a few changes of circumstances that I think are really important. Um, as you know, the flood. Our office has helped. Our office has dedicated staff to that effort and they will continue to do so. Um, as I understand it, for all the buyouts for FEMA, Tyler will be doing the majority of those closings. Um, we anticipate that will bring in about fifty-five thousand dollars for the county. By Tyler having, by having Tyler do those closings rather than outsource that work. Another change in circumstances is our, there's been a severe decline in the victim advocacy and victim service organizations. We lost one of our best advocates for the Wish Unit. And as far as I know, Wish Unit isn't really even operating here. They have Family Crisis Center, but we haven't been told that they hired a new advocate. Then, um, the COVID response, my office has also been assisting with that response. Um, because of Sherry's departure, Nick has been acting as the Public Information Officer. We will also, because of COVID, probably be without an intern. Um, we've had an intern for the past two and a half years. We've saved the county approximately forty-six thousand dollars in labor by using the free help of interns. And this backlog in criminal cases, we've had our cases now suspended for three months. It'll be longer. So that means all of the cases that normally would get taken care of over time will all fall in one short period of time. We have to try all of the criminal cases or resolve them within a hundred and twenty days of June, July thirteenth. That's gonna mean numerous depositions, numerous victim preps for trial. It's gonna mean notices because cases will get continued or resolved quickly. Um, so that has really been a huge mess that we're trying to anticipate and trying to prevent. We're integrating to our new software, which will make this job easier for the individual if we get to hire one. But that integration process, we have to move over all the old data to the new system. So that's gonna be hundreds of man hours. The other thing is, in these positions, there's grant opportunity. And while we don't have a grant secured now, we can have any person who is hired to fill the position, apply for those grants. And usually that covers a, a large, if not all of the portion of a full-time, um, victim witness coordinator. And we're, we're just asking for the part-time. We know that saves the county with benefits. So we anticipate the, the total expense for this position to be about forty thousand dollars. But we do have some changes in circumstances that will save us some money. We're gonna have some money left over this fiscal to pay for a portion of our new software, reducing the amount we'll be spending next year. Um, instead of fifteen thousand, we anticipate it'd be about, about seven thousand that we'll be paying next fiscal, fiscal. We also believe that there'll be a reduce in the expert witness fees. One of our big cases got resolved or is in the process of getting resolved. So, so instead of twenty-five thousand dollars for an expert, we anticipate that's gonna drop drastically unless there's, you know. In our line of work, unforeseen circumstances, if there's a big case, we might have to use that. But we don't anticipate using all the money that we already budgeted for next year. So this will really probably be about a twenty thousand dollar increase in our budget, all said and done. So I'm asking and begging for a part-time position.
I like the begging.
What a full plate. What a full plate.
Nada, one thing I looked at yesterday, and we haven't had a chance to talk about, is currently we have about five hundred and seventy active criminal cases. Which all have to be resolved within the next hundred and twenty.
So, then do you have to get applications out?
I do.
Do you have somebody kinda?
There have been people who have expressed interest and that's, um, mainly people that I've worked with before.
Right.
Um, so I think we can fill the position fairly quickly.
Okay.
Um, which is my hope. I hope to have them hired by June twenty-ninth. That's the beginning of the first paid period for next year, for the next fiscal. Um, so I would post it for two weeks. I would see what interests we had, um, and probably get somebody hired pretty quickly.
And that would get them on board.
Up to speed for July.
Up to speed before we hit the huge mess of.
Oh my gosh, right. What a nightmare.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you know, all of these things are unforeseen and I think the biggest thing that I. Yes, those unforeseen disasters.
I can't stress enough just the difference in not having the Wish Unit and Catholic Charities, their availability is so low. I don't know. I don't know if it's, it has to do with, with budget cuts due to the flood or, or something like that or what. But it's really over the past six to eight months, we really relied on those people a lot because we don't have this position. And now that they're not there, it's like, okay, we're barely doing the bare minimum to, to meet our statutory obligations.
And I think our, our ability to go without for four years just shows how great my staff is, being able to step it up. And we did save the county a ton of money, almost three hundred thousand dollars. But this is a pivotal position that we're asking to reinstate, at least on a part-time basis. And if it's somebody who's versed in victim advocacy and, uh, victim, who has worked for a victim organization before. They're gonna be able to fill that position seamlessly and do it in a part, on a part-time basis. What do you say?
I say you, you're about ready to sink of all the stuff that you see lying ahead.
Gonna be a little busy.
It's gonna be a little busy.
Exactly right.
I'd make a motion to, for. Hire a part-time vic, victim witness coordinator.
You don't have a salary or?
It's, yeah, it's on the back of the job.
It's on there?
So, the low end is nineteen eighty-nine an hour and that's for. Somebody who probably wouldn't have victim experience, as much victim experience. And twenty-eight is for somebody who's worked for a victim agency in the past, has that experience, can walk into the position.
Do you second that?
I second this.
We've got a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye. So you got room for her? I mean, where are you gonna?
Well, we don't have an intern.
We don't know it's her, we don't know it's her.
True. That's true. Males are just as good at.
See, I'm, I'm standing up for her.
Services and empathy to, to victims.
Where would you put it?
Where?
No, no, wait, we'll, wait, it's wrong.
We're not making them an edit.
Where would we put them?
Okay, so in.
It's probably proper nowadays.
Exactly right.
In our intern office, it's the back office and, in our office and.
She sits back, they sit back there and make coffee and stuff.
We really wish we had interns, but Creighton suspended their program at least for the time being, so. We don't have that person to pick up the slack either.
And the professor that.
Retired.
Was in charge of it, retired also, so who knows if they'll have that back or not.
Thank you, thank you. I really appreciate it.
You guys need me for?
Yeah, we're gonna do, we're gonna do fiber.
Text me or something when they.
Where's the mess?
Thanks, Ada.
Call me.
You're the man?
We're doing fiber now.
We're doing fiber now.
So I'm sitting here going, I think we're doing fiber now. And then.
Yeah.
Okay. Got it. So. Yeah.
Do we have anything to add on that?
You want just a motion to verify it, or?
No, no, it was just basically for discussion. Uh, she said that, uh, Carol got ahold of her and wanted to discuss it, so if she had something new to add, that would be great.
No, Mr. Demlow had called me and wanted to see if he would like to come to the meeting and discuss things of the fiber.
It's definitely gonna have to happen.
So, apparently budget's not ready to be talked about?
Right.
Okay.
There's, we didn't wanna, I didn't wanna have us discuss something and then say, this is what you're gonna need. I was gonna get, I was working with Ken and a few fiber providers to get some cost. Then we can find out exactly what, what we can do and where we're going. I didn't wanna say, we wanna go here, 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 here and here, bring everyone here for it. And then say, oh, never mind, hold on, we have to redo everything and bring them back and say, no, really, we're going here, 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 so.
It's smart to, to see.
It's a process.
What they prioritize because they're gonna be providers.
And how does it work? And give me some numbers on what we can do and what we will get if we do that, then come in and put us all at the table. That was Michael.
Then they, then they run some up two hundred and twenty-first street?
They're up two hundred and twenty-first.
So I mean, uh, maybe we could hook, you know, just discussing, we could hook on at Barris or something, go east, you know, circle our way around through the county.
Yeah, I think that, I think that loop running, and of course, it can all change, nothing's set yet, but I think coming off of two hundred and twenty-first, Barris and running through Ohana, through Miniola.
Makes a lot of sense.
Through Silver City. I don't know if we'd have to run through Silver City down to thirty-four unless that was.
Something they needed to hook in instead of having.
If it's something we can afford, you know, that's the, and that's the other cost thing. If we could, if we could not go from Silver City to thirty-four. And maybe get to Henderson or a couple other subdivis, subdivisions, populated areas.
Because ultimately.
Serving more customers and more people is the goal. And then that'll help us turn our money, obviously, which we can take and put to do it again. So, I didn't wanna do a whole trunk line and not have anyone that can hook onto it. Cause you're not gonna generate any money.
Throw the money.
You're just, you're, you're just burying cable, so, so it needs to be planned.
Don't they, don't they trunk in Emerson?
Yes.
This trunk that goes on thirty-four now stops at Emerson, I mean, it's.
I think it does.
Oh, it dead ends there?
I think so. Well, I don't know where they go from there. I know they're to Emerson, but I don't know.
Yeah.
And they kinda DeMarvorn down Jabber, I really, I really thought they were.
They have high speed.
Emerson has high speed.
Yeah, they're rolling.
Like that, yeah.
So jealous of staff, she can just punch right in.
PJ has high speed.
Yeah, PJ has high speed.
Fergie has high speed. We don't, so we need to.
And like, um, when I talked to, um, the state regarding, you know, doing a little changes in our plan potentially of, you know, what we originally said we wanted to use the flood recovery fund money for. They just said, you know, just to kinda, and we're gonna need a cost estimate on it, just to kinda give them a cost estimate and of all the things that we're looking to, to do. Just so they have it and can stay on board. They're, they don't feel there's an issue with doing that. They just kinda want the dollar, you know, just kinda. You guys should put a little plan together.
Is there a need to have any haste behind it, or?
Any what?
Haste behind, I mean, do we need to get this done quickly?
A major haste, but I think we need to start.
We need to get it moving.
So we've got a good plan in there, just so that that, I mean, we know that money is ours.
And with the state doing what they're doing and feds, it's, the timing is perfect. Cause we could actually put, put this with some matching funds and, and hopefully, hopefully do more than what we planned, but, or more than what we want.
Right.
More than what we have, if that makes any sense. But I think the Barris loop, and, and that's really what I wanted to discuss is, is, is there anywhere else that you guys think we have to go right now? Or not do Barris or not go through Miniola or not go through Silver City?
Cause you got too many housing developments that's set in that area and then if you, if we trunk down.
Yes.
Two hundred and thirtieth or whatever street, we wanna come back down two hundred and fiftieth, but the amount of people that we can pick up. In that area is, you know, there's five, six little subdivisions all the way back to there.
The more people we can pick up initially, the more money will turn and the more money we'll have to do this again sooner. I mean, my goal is to, is to create its own machine, to just let it run. Hire someone to manage it and move on. But if that's something that you wanna move forward with, then I will get some cost estimates on that with Ken and a few others. And then, uh, eventually here in the next, I would say, couple weeks, we'll be ready for it.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
No action.
I don't think, I don't think we need any action.
No.
Okay.
Of course, you'll be involved.
Yeah, just let me know what we need from.
There's some state programs that, that I'm sure can and, I mean, we'll, we're probably gonna have to, sooner than later, hire him for his services to help work through this, so.
Right.
There'll have to be some design and, and, and they can do that. They did our studies, so they would be one that knows.
Right.
What they're talking about, they're familiar with it.
You still have it, or did you give it to Elizabeth? Elise.
I gave her a copy of the lease. I don't know, did she?
We need to go over the lease with the building because fiber is, you know.
Oh, yeah.
And she, she's all worried about, you know, what's left down there, what, you know, so.
Yeah, I'm going through and redoing several contracts.
Okay.
Give you free time.
Yeah, right. Yay, contracts.
We figured you was running out of things to do.
Yeah, I got, you know.
Thanks, Doug. How are you guys?
Alrighty.
Better, worse, worse or?
Probably should go get Larry.
Oh, did you? Okay, okay.
I'm not even waiting for him. Did he go to Red Oak?
No, he, well, I, when I walked up here, he was pretty concerned.
Well, while we wait for Larry, um, I, as far as budget goes, we spent some time on that last week. I don't have anything new to add to it, unless you have any follow-up questions. We will keep an eye on it.
We will too.
Okay, I know.
Well, I think the board was very pleased last night with what you presented.
Well, thank you. We had.
I mean, it's.
Well, thank you. We had Board of Health last night. Richard, thanks for coming and, um, we are, really have our budget under a microscope. We're looking at it close, you know what?
I've never seen it this way, guys.
And they're, and they're more involved in it.
In eighteen years, I've never seen a budget.
Well, you know, you still wanna see success at the end, so now we really understand it and.
Well, I think a lot of the board members took it to heart last night going, oh, I mean, they actually could see.
Well, see, even with, there's so much risk, even though you put everything in black and white and here it is, and then we think we're gonna get a fifty-three thousand dollar grant and we don't. Or, I mean, it's so fluid that I think, because of the fluid nature of so much funding. You don't want anyone to have the idea that you're not being transparent or that you're trying to game the system. I just, I want you to see it and if something goes askew, then we'll just talk about it in real time and, and do what we have to do. Because even though I put everything in, wow, it looks neat and tidy and it's boxes and all the math looks pretty. Let's see what the year does to us.
But you, one thing that happened in all those boxes will change.
I know.
You put it there, Darcy commented on it, he says, he says, now I got a vision of seeing, e- even if it doesn't come through. We got a line over here that you can actually follow and it's. We got a line over here that you can actually follow and it still comes out in black and white. I mean.
We'll see. We, I thank you though, uh. I'm thinking good thoughts. The, the budget is a very overwhelming thing to get a handle on. That's been my biggest. Learning curve, but we will. Coming? Okay.
Who's talking with Alan, sir?
Perfect. We will, we will. Hi, Larry. Looking for you. Pull up a chair. Yep.
Guy have an antenna problem.
Uh, we'll give you a quick COVID nineteen update. Last week, I, I kinda just wanna compare last week to this week, so you can kinda see what we're on trend for. Last week, when we came to see you, we had nine positive cases. Three of those cases were recovered. And we had had a hundred and thirty two total individuals tested for COVID nineteen. One week later, we went from nine positive cases to thirteen. Uh, nine of those cases have recovered, so we right now have four cases that we're still doing surveillance. With, and we have a total of three hundred and forty one tested. So that's quite a big leap. We went from a hundred and thirty two to three hundred and forty one.
That's more than your five, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Only seventy more than five, are they?
Yeah. Um, but to explain those numbers a little bit, there's been a big push at the state level to really closely monitor our long-term care facilities. If you watch the news nationally or even locally, you can see that when a COVID nineteen outbreak occurs in a long-term care facility. There's, there's usually some devastating, um, results from that because you have a medically fragile population, so. Over time, the state has shifted a little bit about testing with long-term care facilities. The current guidance that's out is, um. We really want all long-term care facilities, the clients and all the staff to be tested. And it seems like they kinda would like that all to happen at once and establish a baseline. That baseline will only tell you that moment in time. So anytime even. Going forward, your test results could change because you could contract the illness, but it would give long-term care facilities this baseline. So, um, the Glenwood Resource Center is in the process. They started on Thursday or Friday. They've tested a hundred and forty plus of their clients. Those tests have been submitted to the state hygienic lab, but we don't have results on them. So I think that they've tested almost the vast majority of their clientele and now they're gonna get all of their, um, employees tested. How that will work for Mills County is when we have testing done, anybody who lives in this county is followed by our health department. If you work in this county, for instance, at GRC, but you don't live here, maybe you live in Pot County. That case doesn't show up positive for us. The positive cases go to the county you reside in. And then, so if it was Pot County, we would use our sister agency, they would follow that case. However, if it's a business. Particularly a long-term care facility and they're in our county, we follow up with the business, not the person. So we still do some epidemiology and surveillance, but that number doesn't count. Does that make sense? Okay. We also, so, um. We have in our ID system, that's the Iowa Disease Surveillance System, that's the public health. Portal where we find our positive cases and, and do our surveillance. There's currently a hundred and forty nine events pending in there. So what that means is, we hope in the next few days that we don't have any more positive cases. We'd really like to, and I have to compliment our long-term care facilities. Um, they are using PPE, they are full protective wear all the time, they're at work. Um, so they've got really good infection control policies in place. We're hoping that we don't have any sort of outbreak, but with that many, um.
And the people are still in the rooms.
Yes. Yes. With that many cases under investigation, we might see that we have more positives. We've just been sending out early notices to. The Board of Supes and the Board of Health and then out to the press. Um. And then as far as epidemiology, so when we get a positive case, Lori, do you wanna talk about the positive case and then how we link the other family members and how that affects? The total positive numbers that we have in our county?
Sure. So when we get a notification that somebody is positive, we start the, um, the tracing and it involves to start with. Phone calls with the person that tested positive. You go through their history, you go through where they were.
Sorry, I didn't interrupt, but how, how do you find out they're positive? They go to the doctor first? They go to the hospital first?
So, IDs. Well, we get it through IDs, the, the surveillance system through the state, but we also, most of our cases, we've gotten the heads up before it's gone through the, through IDs. We get calls from the lab, we get calls from, um, the doctor's office, um, the ones this past weekend, we got call, we got a call from Pot County. It had, they had been tested in Pot County and so they got the results and then. And then Friday night, they called me. Yep. So even if they're not in IDs, we can start the case as soon as we get, as soon as we know somebody's positive, as soon as we have proof. That somebody is positive and not just a, we heard. You know, so as long as we have proof, then we can start the, the surveillance and we call, we trace, we, we. Kinda determine a timeline depending, you know, you always have your calendar right in front of you when you're talking to people because you, you are watching the timeline. Um, and then once you go through everything with that person, you start to deal with the contacts of that person. We always consider, we always consider the household contacts. Um, we go through all of them, we decide, you know, do they have symptoms, do they not? If they have symptoms, then they automatically become a case. Those cases aren't counted in our thirteen. So we have other, what we call epi-linked cases that don't show up in our count. So we follow those just like we would call, follow a positive lab confirmed case. We follow up, we make sure that they, um, that they are quarantined, that they follow the ten day, um, three day fever free rule before they're, um. Able to be out and about again. We also, for those who aren't symptomatic, we are, you know, we make sure that they quarantine for the fourteen days. So symptomatic, they have to quarantine for ten days, three days fever free. Um, if they don't have symptoms, they have to go even longer. So we do the household and then we, we follow up with anybody that they have been around. Is there other family members? Um, other friends, um, employees, employers, so we have to follow with all of them.
Grocery stores, gas stations, you count all that too, or do you?
So it depends on if the, the rule is if they were with somebody for more than thirty minutes, closer than six feet. So if they went into the gas station, were they there longer than thirty minutes? Were they closer than six feet? If not, if they went in and left right away, we would not count that because we assume that we have community spread. We assume every time you go into a gas station, you're going to be exposed by somebody. So we don't, we don't follow up with the gas stations, the grocery store, those types of places unless you know you've been there for a longer time period. So if you work there, it's a different story. If you're just going in to pick up a gallon of milk, we would not consider that. We would tell you that if you're going to go into a store, if you're going to go into a gas station, assume that you've been exposed by somebody. So, so that's, so we, we follow all these people and then depending on how they're doing and how they're feeling, we may call them daily. We may call them every couple days. If they're feeling okay and things are going well, we have to follow up with them at day ten. And if they're doing well, they meet the criteria, then we, we basically release them. So that happens at day ten. If they're not doing well at day ten, we follow them every three days until we feel like they can be released. So that's basically in a nutshell how the, the case follow-up.
And I don't know if you can answer this question or not, but have any of these people that have tested positive, have they been hospitalized?
No, we have zero hospitalizations or, um.
Someone asked me that and I said, yeah, I don't know.
And that's tracked on the, on the Iowa Department of Public Health's website. They track.
It's a little crazy to try to.
It, it is, it is.
They changed it yesterday. They changed it twice.
And you know, we, when we, um, push that out to the media, we have residents of the county that will reach out to us and they want to know. Like you suggested, do we need to notify what town and everywhere that that person went? If you remember early in COVID nineteen on the media. They would say, this person has been to this Walmart and this Walmart. There was one that had been to like four Walmarts in one day and they put out this mass. Blast and three bars, yes. And it was done that way early on because there wasn't substantial community spread. And so we were tracking every single place and then announcing it. But over time, it is, it, it's shifted to like Lori said, where it's substantial community spread, so that's why we have all those practices in place. That you need to maintain six feet distance. You need to not be in groups bigger than ten. If you go grocery shopping, consider wearing a mask, so. If I go into the marketplace to grocery shop, I do all the good hand washing, I wear the mask, I keep my social distance. When I leave, I do, I do more because I'm gonna think that when I went into Walmart and there were other people that had been in the building now and before me. That COVID nineteen would be there. So you take all those precautions into place. It's just like with our long-term care facilities, even if one of our workers would test positive. If they've been doing all those very safe practices, wearing the mask and the gown and the, you know, they're doing good containment. So that's why we don't now track every single place someone's been and still people want that. And, and you understand why, and then you also can understand why we're not doing that anymore, but. If you field questions, you can kinda understand the, the rhyme and reasons, and then I think it's hard too because. Um, COVID nineteen is a, is a novel thing. We've never dealt with it before and all the guidance that we had at day one is not the same as we have at. Week eleven, which I think we're in week eleven this week, so. Things have shifted and changed and, and our protocol, um, changes a little bit as the disease progresses and our understanding of it does.
See what a panic can do.
Sure.
So with that not knowing is just keep.
Another, another thing that is really hard is, you know, trying to balance the, the health of the individual. And the health of our economy. And we are gonna be dealing with COVID nineteen for the long haul. There's not a short fix for this. Somewhere down the road, we're gonna have a vaccine and that's gonna be very helpful, but. The governor and even here locally, you know, you can see a shift where more businesses are opening up and that we're just putting those. Um, healthy infection control practices into play as we open up restaurants, fitness centers and other businesses, so. We are gonna have to look at the health of our economy and balance that with the COVID nineteen concerns. That's really all I have. Unless you have any other questions, we can just get you updated.
I just gotta comment, one of my coffee drink buddies. Went to a Walmart and I guess there are arrows on the floor that you're supposed to follow with your card. Well, he's going down the aisle and he forgot something back here, so he makes a U-turn.
Walmart police.
Please do not make U-turns in aisle.
Oh.
And he, I didn't pay attention to it. He's like, what, you know? Please, sir, would you turn back into proper procedure?
So they got you on camera.
Well, yeah, they got the whole score. He says, I finally realized my wife could pull out my shirt. Can't you hear what they're saying? What do you mean? They're talking about you.
And a Hy-Vee does the same thing. They got arrows. I mean, they will call you.
They're almost everywhere.
I was gonna say, because a couple people that I know very well have taken their elderly parents to the, let them because they're tired of being in and they wanna go do their own grocery shopping. And we listen to some funny stories with them doing the same thing. Well, oh, oh, I need something and they just turn around. It's like, no, you can't do that. And both of these individuals wanted to wear a shirt that said, I am not with that person. Because they're like, oh my gosh, but it seems to be that era.
At the Resource Center, I would be notified right away if there was a case there on account of I'm in charge of the parent family group. So I would let you know, or they would probably let you know right away too, but I haven't heard anything.
Really close contact with, um, the director of NRCR.
But do not hesitate to over notify us either. If you, if you hear something and you can reach out to us.
You can check it out, so.
Yeah, that would be awesome.
We are waiting on bated breath for results because we know every, almost all of the clients have been tested up there.
And those were on, so, I mean, any day now, today or tomorrow.
Three, four days.
Yep.
Yep.
So.
Better than waiting ten days, right?
Yeah, we're also starting to see a little bit of serology come through and, um, there's been a few people in Mills County. That have been tested, um, for serology to see if they have actual antibodies. So we'll, we'll start to see that more and more too. So.
Larry, did we leave anything out?
Well, the, the only thing is, I think, uh, this week, uh, some of our dental services were trying to open back up. I know that. They were doing emergencies. I know Albertson's is doing emergency type work only, about nine eleven every day, Devon told me. And, uh, but they're again struggling with PPE also because their criteria is passed down to them. Uh, the N ninety five act word came up that they must use, which I thought was unusual, uh, if they have a face mask, so. Um, they had some things, so we took some stuff out of county resources instead of the public health resources. And, uh, gave them some, uh, face shields that are durable that we've been giving our first responders in public health and of life in Glen Haven. Uh, so that they're not disposable type, so, uh, letting them test those out. Uh, so they can get back to some level of, you know, providing services or whatever, and then, uh. The Glenwood Library is looking to start something more than just, uh, walk something out, uh, so they asked for some assistance also on getting it for cleaning and. PPE, basic stuff, so they could start some. The other libraries in the county, I'll probably reach out to them and see what their plans are, could get something going, because some of that start getting released up as long as they take basic precautions. And I think that's, that's an important thing, so.
Keep living.
Yeah. Moving forward and, uh. I know the schools had to have something in here about a week or so ago to the state on their plans. Next fall, and I think they, that's been all turned in and I, didn't they come out with about a five years? They put five days or five days on the next year, I think, or something like that, I've heard. Starting out, I think that's what they're going to do possibly. I don't know about East Mills, but I think Glenwood, that's what they're gonna do. So. So it's devastating for the students in Dowley, we all know that and everything else, um.
East Mills put out a deal already, they're just gonna start the nineteenth of August.
They, they might, but I, but I think.
It's early.
Yeah.
I heard earlier, August.
They usually start that. I mean, it's usually in the middle.
It had to be after state fair was over, remember? The governor went into and made that determination because they didn't want, they wanted Iowa to go to state fair.
No, that would, that would put them past.
So what about?
Have they made any determinations on the state fair yet? Is it still up in the air?
It's still in the air.
Last information that we had from the governor was on Friday, and she said the Iowa State Fair Board will be making a decision in the next thirty days.
Because that also is contingent on what the counties are doing and our county's continuing as.
They're, they're planning, uh, I know that Julie and Lori have been in contact with, uh, some, uh, fair board representation over there. And, uh, and they put a big blog out, you know, here recently on social media of all they're doing, the plan and things that nature, but I think it's their, at least they. They toned it, they put it in a tone such as. They may may have to make the hard decision, but they're looking at ways that they can do something. But, uh, um, I thought they might try and delay it a little bit, you know, but they want, it's a timing thing is what it is. Now, there's some counties in the state that do, do their county fairs in June, and that's a big problem because of where we are right now. And some of them have been canceled because of that, so I think as long as the fair board keeps a, a, a good outlook on things, keep planning along, but knowing that it could get hard. To do it, so, uh, so we'll, we'll see.
Yeah, I know they've been working with the leaders and trying to come up with something creative to, to, and I know last weekend, I think they tagged sheep, so they're kind of. Trying to move forward in that by appointment, so.
And sometimes it's the details. For instance, if we did a county fair, how would we do bathrooms?
Yeah, do what?
Bathrooms. Bath, bathrooms are an issue. Public bathrooms are not. Um, like right now, you can go camping, but you have to have a camper with your own toilet. And if you have a county fair, you need bathrooms. And if we have them, then the environmental cleaning that's required and how do you handle that, and so it, it's a lot of fine details that you might not think. I mean, bathrooms isn't the first thing you think of when you think county fair.
There's a lot of people that need bathrooms.
Yeah, yeah.
You'd have so many of this, they're cleaning every time somebody came out.
Oh, yeah, you've got someone going door to door.
Every time, you'd have the inner cleaning and I don't know where they wanna, that would be.
Absolutely, yeah. I don't know if anybody knows that, is that the job you want to be there?
You might get called up.
You know, I was just thinking that.
That's all we have. Thank you.
Well, let's cross our fingers and say some prayers.
Yeah.
Do that.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Um, we will see you here next week.